Tammy, please let the record show that all Board members are present this evening.
Kelly's on this way.
He just stepped in when you hit the gap.
Okay. All right. This time, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance, and I have the honor of leading you this evening. So if you can stand, if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Brings us to item 2.03, Approval of the Agenda. I will entertain a motion that the Board approved the agenda as presented. Do I? Motion from Board Member Thomas Tate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Board Member Provance. I think some of us are still getting logged on, so we will take a verbal vote on this, and it's on the motion that the Board approved the agenda as presented. Board Member Provance, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye, so that passes seven-nothing. We have no public comments this evening, so that will bring us to item 4.01. Contracts, Agreements, Change Orders, and Bids. This is informational this evening, and then we will vote on these items at the February 25th, 2025 Regular Meeting. This information has been shared with the Board prior to this evening, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions. Are there additional questions at this time? And we'll still have two more weeks to review these items. That moves us to item 5.01, Policy Adoptions and Revisions. There are 11 policies on the agenda for review. These will be brought forward for a vote at the February 25th, 2025 Meeting. Again, we've had time to review the policies and ask questions, and we've got another two weeks to do that as well. As a reminder, these policies were brought forward by MSBA with recommended adjustments based on legislation and changes in their statute. Are there questions on these recommended Board policy adoption and revisions? Okay. Moves us to item 6.01, New Business. And at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Sean Dilday to the podium to present information on the Student Nutrition Management expenditures.
Can you leave me out of this quick?
Okay.
So before we just say we have some concerns concerning our nutrition services program, this is the for the final year for extending our current contract, and that information is provided via the board packet. Is there any questions that I can answer pertaining to this information?
Hold on, this next. Same thing. We will be voting on this at the February 25th, or 25th, 2025 Board Meeting. Yes, Board Member Mahal.
Well, my question isn't necessarily pertaining to this, but this is the fourth year of a four-year, four-one-year contract.
This is the final year.
The final year.
So we can extend it, and we will put out our RFP.
Yeah, I guess that's my question.
And bring it back to the Board next February for a new contract. So it's a five-year total contract.
Okay. So can you tell me about that process? So what does that mean? What does that look like?
Microphone on.
Yeah, it's green.
Can you hear me? Oh.
That's what it was doing last. There we go.
So the original RFP was put out in 2021. With that, RFP was a one-year contract with extension contracts for a five-year total period. This is the final extension of that existing original contract. We'll put out another RFP and bring it back to the Board next year, 2026, for renewing, whether we went with Aramark or a different company.
So it's about, wow, I have to really go into this, huh? Sorry. So I assume it's about this time of the year when it'll come back to us. About how many months in advance does it go out to RFP? Like, when does that happen?
We'll, actually, that's on my calendar. I'll visit with our purchasing department in summer. We'll get a RFP put out early in the fall, and that way, we've got a full month of January to review before it comes to the Board in February. So it's a long process.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions from Board members about the Student Nutrition Management expenditures that we'll vote on next Board Meeting? Okay. That brings us to item 6.02, Track Repairs and Resurfacing at Glendale, Hillcrest, and Kickapoo High Schools.
Yes, another informational item. This is a capital project. It'll be funded out of 25-26 budget. We've done this previous years. Due to scheduling purposes, we have to go ahead and get this aligned with a contractor, and the work will be done over the summer months when kids are not in the buildings. This will be for Hillcrest, Kickapoo, and Glendale High School tracks, and it'll be resurfacing of those tracks. Dollar amount total is $669,000. Or, yes, $669,000. Any questions I can answer for this one?
Don't roll the tracks six, clean, or anything.
Honestly, I cannot answer that question off the top of my head. I'd have to look at it, and I can send you that information. That would be helpful.
Susan, the only eight, the only eight-lane track we have is Parkview.
I was gonna say, Parkview is our only competition track. I believe, I believe all of them have a different lane number, but I can send you that information.
No, Tectra Street is the one we own, that we lease out, or, yeah.
Are there other Board member questions on this topic?
I'll just say, this contractor, Vernon Jones, is strangely spelled the same way as my last name, so I'd like to say that I have nothing to do with Vernon Jones, and there's no, there is, there is no relationship, and I am not in the track repair business.
Completely different group.
Noted. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
That brings us to item 6.03, E-Rate Purchase Approval. And Mr. Bruce Douglas will join us and give us some information.
So we'll bring up the presentation. This is our annual E-Rate Purchase. So annually, we do bidding and purchasing of equipment through the E-Rate Program. And the E-Rate Program feder, is a federal program that provides reimbursement to schools and libraries. Thank you. And we'll run through this slide deck real quick. In front of you tonight are purchasing network switches for middle schools and elementaries. This is part of our normal refresh of equipment to help support the network that supports our operations, our instructional needs across the board. So we'll just quickly go over the E-Rate Program. We'll talk about just how is our network impacted by this? What does this boil down financially for the district? And then what are the next steps within the E-Rate Program? So, like I said, E-Rate's a federal program. It was established in 1997. It's established through the FCC but administered through the Universal Service Administration Company, or USAC, and it provides discounts to eligible schools and libraries for equipment and services around Internet connections. So E-Rate works off of an annual cycle, starts with bidding, which usually happens in the fall into the winter timeframe. The request is where we are tonight, is we have to request the funds based upon the bid that we are awarding to specific vendors. And then from there, they actually review every single one and provide us a funding letter. So from request tonight, it'll go into the review cycle. We usually get our funding notice somewhere in the summer timeline, which then allows us to purchase equipment and begin the work. The invoicing then happens after that. And the invoicing is when we, once we receive the materials and have them installed, that's when vendors can start invoicing, and they can start requesting funding back from USAC. So E-Rate covers two categories of services. The first is Category 1, which is Internet access and data transmission. So for us, that covers our Internet access for the whole district, along with the wide-area network that connects all the schools to our data center here at Craft. Category 2 is, covers kind of internal connections and other services, such as our firewall. And you'll actually see that in K-Cup tonight, that we also have a bid out for our firewall services. The internal connections are the network switches. That's what provides the network connectivity between our wireless network back here to Craft as well. That has a five-year cycle and has a per-pupil allocation that we look to expend all of, because that's all money that gets reimbursed back to us as a district. So from our network, the background on our network is with the 2013 bond, we actually updated the entire network. From there, we started to develop out our network refresh. So the wireless refresh began from 2018 to 2023, and we have that on a seven-year cycle. So we actually began refreshing our wireless network this year as we hit that seven-year cycle and started that with our high schools. Tonight, we're looking at the wired network, which is the switch purchases, and that begins a 10-year lifecycle. We get a longer lifecycle out of our switches than our wireless access points, and we're looking to have this upgrade completed by 2027. And as we look at the network, these are the priorities that we have. We always want to make sure we're supporting the learning in the classroom with our network. We want to make sure that we're supporting our operations of HVAC security and all the other pieces that utilize our network to access the Internet and also internal services. We always want to make sure that it's secure. So with that, the purchase tonight, we have financial impact, obviously. E-Rate has two different ways of doing invoicing. The first is a bear invoicing, where we bid it one year, then we install it the next year, and then the third year, we actually get the money back. The other method that we are now utilizing is the spy method, where we bid it, and then we invoice it, and the service provider goes back to the FCC and USAC to get the funds. So it takes us out of the game a little bit, makes it quite a bit easier for us to maintain. So it takes us out of the game a little bit, makes it quite a bit easier for us to maintain this, but also puts it back on the service provider to go get those rebates. So we have to approve the entire amount, but from a fiscal standpoint, we only pay the eligible portion of this. And so for tonight's purchase, we pay that 20%, which is the 162,936. The service provider will go to USAC to receive their E-Rate-funded portion of the 651,000 for a total cost of the 114,677. So we approve the full amount, but then the SPS-funded piece is what actually comes out of our expenditures. So for next steps, tonight, we'll, with approval, we will then submit our request, and that's the Form 471 that goes to the FCC. From then, we start looking for that funding approval, which we anticipate in June to September, and then September to May next year, we'll complete the work of installing these switches and completing the process. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about E-Rate or switches.
Okay, thank you. And that was under administrative con, or I'm sorry, executive content. It will be moved to public content after the, tonight's meeting. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
When we look at the total district expenditure of 162,936, is that, are, does that increase substantially from year to year? Does it decrease? Does it pretty much hold steady? I have no frame of reference.
Yeah, it really depends on where we're at in the refresh of the network. So with category two equipment, we can request that anytime within the cycle, and it's just dependent upon what equipment we're purchasing. The last couple of years, this has been about the dollar amount. We've budgeted roughly a million dollars total, and then as we get bids back, we end, we've been ending up around this kind of 800 to 900,000 for the overall equipment. And then the equipment tonight was all eligible, meaning that we paid the 20% and 80% of it is reimbursed.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. So this amount, 800 and some thousand dollars, so that's for, if you go to slide nine, is that for the wired network? Or is this? Okay, so the wireless refresh, so we're done with that, or we're continually replacing it?
We're continually replacing.
Okay.
So last year's purchase was for high school wireless, and we completed that this school year. We're now, we've bid the wired network for our middle schools and elementaries heading into next year, and it's a constant.
So wired, you mean physically wired?
Physically wired.
And then through the, and then wireless is wireless capability in each building?
Yeah.
So what you have, it was refreshed between 2018 and 2023, so it was all done, and then we're restarting it?
Yeah.
The replacement?
Yeah.
The re-refresh?
That's already seven years from 2018.
Okay, so this is a work that continually we work through. Okay. And then in terms of, in the past, has there ever been a time when we haven't received? It's always like worked, like clockwork.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
I had a question, but Mary maxed the same question about the wireless refresh.
Any other board member questions at this time? All right, thank you. That brings us to item 7.01, change orders and agreements, and Mr. Dill Day will join us again.
So in your board package this evening is the change order agreements that we need to approve to move forward with these items. Small list this, this evening with some material testing at Cowden, and then some safety and security issues here at KAC that we did. So just need approval to move this forward.
Okay, thank you. Are there any board member questions on this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that the board approve the change orders and agreements as presented.
I'll make that motion, change orders and agreements.
Motion from Board Member McCoskey, do I have a second? Second from Board Member Thomas Tate. I think we can vote electronically. And the motion that the board approved the change orders and agreements as presented passes seven, nothing. That takes us to item 7.02, the demolition for the Pipkin Middle School Project, not current Pipkin.
Not current Pipkin, no.
Question about that.
So before you is the demolition package for the Pipkin Middle School that is on the property that we purchased from AG, not the current Pipkin Middle School. Four bidders bid on this project. We opened bids on February the 4th. Low bid was Courtney Construction at $1,195,000. Recommendation is to approve this bid so we can begin the demo package on that project.
Okay. Are there board member questions? And I know we received this information previously. Okay, I will entertain a motion that the board approve the demolition package for the Pipkin Middle School Project as presented. Motion from Board Member Mohammed Kani, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Board Member McCoskey, and we will vote. Okay, the motion regarding the demolition package passes, passes seven, nothing. That brings us to item 8.01, superintendent's update.
Good evening, board members. Last Saturday, I was honored to join volunteers for Care to Learn Shop with a Hero event, which served 176 elementary students. Each student, student received $100 in cash and $60 Walmart gift card to shop for health, hunger, and hygiene items with the help of an SPS hero. It is such a blessing, blessing to witness the joy this brings to our students and their families. Thank you to Care to Learn and all of our SPS heroes for making this possible. We're looking forward to our Teach SPS recruitment event, which will be held Thursday from 4:30 to 5:30 at the Professional and Virtual Learning Center. This is an opportunity for us to reach out to new teachers and share the benefits of working at SPS Still Have Fun Networking Event. Participants may connect with SPS leaders who can answer questions they have about potential job openings and how to apply. February 21st, we will host our Principal for a Day. We have 57 community leaders that will be visiting our schools. Those of you who attended Good Morning Springfield last week may recall Chamber Board President Bob Helm sharing his excitement about the upcoming opportunity. This is a great opportunity for our community to witness firsthand the amazing work that happens inside of our schools each day. We also have several engagement opportunities scheduled for the next several weeks for parents, employees, and partners, including Gather with Granita, Superintendent Solutions, and Watching the Weather Report tonight. Board members, that concludes my update.
Thank you, Dr. Lathan. That takes us to item 9.01, board comments. Are there comments from the board this evening?
I'd like to have a comment, if I could please. A small bit of history about President's Day, which we're going to take off next Monday on the 17th. George Washington was born in Pope's Creek in Virginia in February 27th, or 22nd, excuse me, 1732, and passed away December 14th, 1799. George Washington was a founding father and our first president of the United States, and SPS will not attend school next Monday in celebration of what we know today as President's Day. Let our audience know that President's Day was initially established in 1879 to celebrate the birthday of our nation's first president, George Washington. According to National Archives, it, it was believed the founding father was born on February 11th, 1731, according to a then-used Julian calendar. But when the colony shifted from the Gregorian calendar in 1752, Washington's birthday was moved to February 27th, or 22nd of 1731. According to history.com, Washington's birthday was an unofficial observance for most of the 1800s. In 1879, President Rutherford B. Hayes signed into law following a proposal by Senator Stephen Wallace Dorsey of Arkansas. By 1885, Washington's birthday became a nationwide holiday and the first to celebrate the life of an individual American. National Archives tells us the holiday has shifted to celebrate and recognize all past U.S. presidents, despite Congress nor any president having ever stipulated that the name of the holiday once known as Washington's Birthday be changed to President's Day. Further, our United States code that specifies holidays for federal employees identifies a holiday to be known as Washington's Birthday. So Monday, have a great Washington's Birthday.
Thank you, Board Member McCoskey. Are there other board comments?
A couple of things I wanted to share. So I go to the debate tournament that's put on by Glendale and Central every year, and I enjoy it so very much. And this year, I was a little nervous because Jack Tuckness is no longer there, but it was a great event, and our students from Hillcrest and Kickapoo and Parkview sure did impress like they do every year. So I encourage all of you to be a judge next year. I promise you, it's well worth your time. I also wanted to make another comment because I'm the squeaky wheel. And I've talked about this before, about these missed opportunities that we have as a governing body. You know, and, and I know that we try to discuss cell phones and discipline, and I'm disheartened that we have essentially, as a board, removed ourselves out of that process, right? So I don't know if you guys realize, but our discipline policy explicitly states we're not anywhere in it. There's, there's nothing, the board has no connection to any decisions that are made administratively. So, and we govern through policy, and we have zero policy when it comes to discipline. And there's a lot of things that I think are problematic. For example, if a student punches somebody in their junior year, they get a reset for their senior year. Or we, we still struggle with cell phones, and my problem with the cell phones is I don't like that there's legislation now moving forward, because I absolutely believe in local control. It kind of irks me that, that that's what it's come to. So with that preamble, well, because I think that when we don't try to step into that arena, it comes at a cost to our students and staff. I think it's to their detriment. And so I know that at some point, it's going to be coming up soon, our watered-down legislative platform, thank you very much, Kelly, for working on it last year, and worked on it with you, and I really, really appreciate that. But I just want to make another request to the board to seize upon this opportunity that we have to sort of rally around the legislative process in the sense that I don't want to find us in May unhappy with what happened, and to try to be more active in building relationships with legislators, intentional relationships, looking at the bills and seeing maybe this is the time, this is the year to get involved. And it could be something that has to do with budget. Maybe we develop a relationship with the, the House and Senate budget to try to get more funding. Maybe it has to do with regulations. I mean, there's a lot of regulations. I mean, all those policies that we're going to be voting on next time are a result of, mostly of Senate Bill 727. I just want to see, you know, I want to invite you guys to reach out to the Board President and Vice President if you have at all an interest in doing something, and it doesn't have to be at the board table. We could have like something that's informal, or I don't know, I don't want to call it a study session, but like a roundtable sort of discussion. We can each bring in a couple bills that we think are really good, and then we could put our minds together and maybe come up with one that we want to get behind. I mean, maybe that's not the one that crosses the line, but it'll get us, it'll get our fingertips wet. Maybe next year, we'll get our hands wet. Maybe fun, someday, we'll get our hands dirty and get in there and try to flex our muscles. I think it's, it's, it's a worthy endeavor. I think we're going to learn a lot as a group. I think it's going to bring us together, the conversations. Every time we've tried to have, every time we try to tackle something like the strategic plan, and I know that not all of us were here at the time, I found that was useful as not just a professional development, but as a board building exercise. And so maybe that's how we look at it, and we might walk away from it saying, ah, we're going to set this year out. We don't see anything we like. But we do have a lobbyist, so we can have our lobbyist help us through that process. The lobbyist can, you know, be the person who actually implements what we decide. So just wanted to throw that out there. Think about it, and if you have an appetite for this, reach back out to Dr. Lathan or Danielle.
Thank you.
We've been involved, sorry, the voice is horrible. The grans are Petri dishes. We had an archery tournament. Last week, we have another one tomorrow. 9:00 AM. Get the buses on time. And Stephen, I'd like to thank you and Dr. Lathan for attending. It's an incredible event. I kind of want to tie it into what you just talked about, Miriam. The rules in archery, you, you can't have, you know, headset, you can't have earbuds, you can't have your phone. They just make it a rule that if you have your phone and it goes off, it's a distraction, and the archer is removed from the tournament. They are allowed their phone at the end of the tournament, because a lot of them will take a picture of their scorecard. I actually encourage that to make sure that what the paper scorecard is turned in is accurate. The kids will get their results online on their phone, and then they will get their team scores online. So there is a place for a phone. What I love to see is the students have the discipline to use it when they need it and not use it when they shouldn't have it out. And I, maybe I'm, you know, a little wide-eyed thinking that everyone, all students will understand there is an importance to not have a distraction during instructional time. The phone is not bad, it is part of your future, but use it, don't misuse it. I think that a discipline policy that does set a consequence for misbehavior, and I consider, you know, using it at the wrong time, misbehavior. I consider, you know, bullying and, you know, everything else is part of a behavior that needs a consequence to help correct and enforce, learn from. I, I think that was one of the things that I, the few things, Tom, that I enjoyed from the Super Bowl was both quarterbacks talked about setbacks in their life were learning opportunities, and that it meant more to them to have disappointment and learn from it so that they can still move forward than to celebrate the few times that all went right. So I do want to thank you again for the tournaments. It was a great experience, and I'm glad that you were, it's, it's hard to describe it without seeing it. So thank you again, you and Stephen.
Thank you. Are there other board member comments?
This past week, I had the opportunity to attend the MSBA Regional Executive Council Meeting, and on the lines of everything that's been discussed by the board today, I would like to encourage board members to make use of the weekly that comes out from MSBA. And I would like to particularly point you to a couple of links that include the advocacy, the advocacy link and the board report link. Both of those links offer opportunities for board members to get more involved and oftentimes giving them some tools for engaging in advocacy, whether it's local or at the legislative level. So I, I know we get a lot of email, but this is one that I encourage you all to utilize with regards to the information that is provided regarding what's happening in the state at the legislative level and locally. the legislative level and locally. That's all.
Can you repeat the advocacy, and then what was the other one?
Board report.
Board report, thank you.
It was interesting at the meeting that several of the districts said that they actually watch the board report at their board meetings regularly, or they gather together as a board to watch those meetings because they do offer some information that is useful to boards as we are developing policies or, you know, advocating or whatever we're doing, there is oftentimes some information in those. And there's a video that goes along with the board report that comes out weekly, and so it's an opportunity for us to utilize that information and maybe, you know, implement some things here in Springfield.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I guess I will abdicate my role as board historian to Board Member McCoskey. I appreciate, I know, I love that, and I particularly like presidential history, so thank you. And for anyone in the audience, there's a great Netflix show about Washington that I just watched last week, and it is, plus I've read the book, the biography of him, which is very good, but it's really a good show, and it's a good 90 minutes to spend your time on something educational. I liked Board Member Mohammed Kani's idea of getting more involved with the legislatures, and you've brought that up before, and I thought that's a good idea, but I don't know that I ever said it, so I'm saying it now. I did have an opportunity, and I went up with Dr. Shaw and Shalina Goodnight to the, and Board Member Byrne was up there, to the legislators, or salute educators, thank you, Dr. Lathan. Oh, we're saluting them? I thought they were saluting us. Okay, well, anyway, I had a chance to introduce myself to my state representative, which I always knew who he was but had never met him. I also got to talk to a couple of state senators, and we talked about some of the things actually that had been said in Governor Kehoe's inaugural address that I had some questions about. So it was a really nice opportunity to connect face-to-face with some folks, and I thought that was good. I also attended a town hall meeting on Saturday with Representative Stephanie Heine, where I got an update on a lot of different issues. And she was very articulate in, and very diplomatic in terms of things that she was reporting back to her constituents. So maybe I've started on that path to get involved, but I like the idea of the whole board really being, I'll just comment on myself, that I should be more conversant and better informed on actually what's going on in Jeff City. Although I try, I think I could do better. So that brings me to the shirts that President Kincaid and I are wearing. This is the Week of Love SPS with the Springfield Public Schools Foundation, and if you're not aware of what they're doing, they're raising funds for individual schools. It's a very worthwhile organization. They, I was at Lunch and Learn today, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but Natalie Murdock reported that just this year, I think they've given away a million dollars' worth of grants out to the schools. So that really is an incredible group to be a part of and to support. So love SPS. Then, back to the Lunch and Learn. I had the privilege of listening to two really great speakers. Chief Farrell, I don't, I think he was going to be here tonight, but he's, oh, there you are. He did a really nice job talking about and educating the group about school safety, the kinds of initiatives we have going on in Springfield Public Schools, and that's an area of concern, I think, to a lot of people, and it's a real area of interest to me for a lot of different reasons. But still, I learned some things in listening to Chief Farrell, and I appreciated him taking the time, and I could tell just the vibes in the room. People really did appreciate that. The other speaker was equally engaging, and that's our Director of Transportation, Keith Adams. He did a wonderful job talking about some of the upgrades going on in transportation and some of the communication links. And yes, I do hear about those things primarily when we're purchasing them, but on the other hand, he really made it real to me what's actually going on in terms of keeping our children safe and our staff safe in terms of transportation, and really, it was eye-opening to me. Wouldn't be a bad idea to let them come to a board meeting and share all that information because it was great. We are not a district that's sitting still. We're moving forward, truly, with safety and security, with technology, with curriculum, with instruction, with communication, and with student learning. And that's never lost on me, never lost on me. So thank you to everyone for coming tonight. I appreciate that and for listening to me.
Thank you.
I also watched a history documentary this weekend. Also watched a history documentary this weekend. I don't want to be outdone here.
The Super Bowl?
No, it was World War II. No, I did, I did want to say, so we completed the superintendent review, whatever, a few weeks ago, and it was a 7-0 vote to extend Dr. Lathan's contract. And I just wanted to say, I just really appreciated that process and that we have, I think, grown as a board, and, you know, despite disagreements, I think we remain productive and function together better than we have in the past. I think many of us expressed that we, expressed, I guess, similar ideas. I think one good thing that came out of that is our continued commitment to communicate more despite our disagreements, to find, to find where our agreements lie and to move forward on, to move forward with progress on those things. And I think that we committed to communicate more often in that way and to get together more often, and I look forward to that as we continue to improve the nature of our relationship as we work together to improve the district.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
I think this is the first board meeting since the Tournament of Champions. Is that? I think it is. So I just want to give a recognition, another successful Tournament of Champions, and although I didn't get to see it, that's what I was, that's what I was, yes, I didn't get to see it in person, but I saw it online, your basket, yeah, your basket that you made. So, yeah, I just wanted to recognize that we had another successful Tournament of Champions. I had the honor last night of attending the Council of PTA's Founder's Day, and I just want to say thank you to all of the adults and guardians and parents and teachers who are involved in PTAs. I know that it makes a difference in our students' lives, and it's, it is a volunteer position, and I appreciate it so much. And I was shocked by the statistic, the, oh, now the name's going to escape me, the Clothing Bank, the PTA Clothing Bank. The need has just grown and grown, and I know that, Miriam, you've talked about this before, but we continue to see that need grow and grow. And so if anybody has got some extra clothes lying around, I know that they would appreciate some donations at the Clothing Bank. And I also wanted to say thank you to Principal Brown and the students who showcased their talents last night. We had the Step Club that, is that what it's called? The Step Club that provided their routine to us, the jazz band, the choir. It was just very, very impressive, and I appreciate the students who stayed late yesterday evening to showcase their talents, so. And Nutrition Services, yes, for providing an excellent meal yesterday evening. Okay, and that leads us to Item 9.02, Upcoming Meetings. Our next meeting is February 25th, and that will be a regular board meeting. And now we will move to Item 10.01. I will entertain a motion that we adjourn our meeting this evening.
I move to adjourn.
Motion from Board Member McCoskey. Do I have a second? Second from Board Member Thomas Tate, and we will vote. And the motion to adjourn passes seven nothing. We will see you in a few weeks.